Good evening, this is Eastline Board of Selectmen, regular meeting of September 18th, 2024. Eastline Town Hall, upper meeting room, seven, just after seven o'clock, 7:02. And if we could rise, would you say, Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Are we going to need the screen? Kevin, obviously pull this down.
Um, no, we might should just.
What?
Yes.
Yes. All right, are there any additional agenda or consent items that we need to add? I'm not aware of any.
Nope, I don't have any.
Okay. And next is delegations, and what I would mention is later on in the agenda, we're going to have appointments to the Fair Rent Commission. So if anyone wants to address the board regarding that topic, that would probably be the appropriate time to do it, and we'll permit that tonight to address the board.
In other words, if someone is interested in serving but didn't already turn in a resume? Is it?
Well, or if they want to comment about what we're doing, yeah, so that would be the time to do it. So, other than that, are there other members here that would like to address the board? Go ahead, yes, sir. If you would just give your name and address and use the podium, please.
Good evening, my name's Steve Alli, good, I live in 53 Formar River Road, O'Leary, Connecticut. I'm Vice President of the Eastline Historic Cemetery Association, and I'm on the Board of Directors of the Eastline Historical Society. I'm here tonight to address the proposed Board of Finance budget cuts to the nonprofits in Section 115, service to the community part of the 2025 town budget. Both the Historic Eastline Cemetery Association and the Eastline Historical Society, the nonprofits I belong to, have a group of active members who volunteer hundreds of hours to the town of Eastline. Some of the volunteer work we do with the Historic Eastline Cemetery Association includes mowing many of the cemeteries in Eastline, removing all the leaves and 16 of the Eastline Cemeteries, gravestone repairs, tree cutting and removal of trees from the cemeteries that are in jeopardy of damaging some of these old gravestones. All the volunteer work of these historic properties saves the town of Eastline lots of money. Cutting the budget to these nonprofits does not make good business sense. I think it may also send a message to young people in town that volunteering and giving back to the community is not important. As a member of the Eastline Historical Society for more than 30 years, I know the town has donated $2,250 to our historical society over the past 15 years. This is very much appreciated. The Eastline Historical Society spends, the town owns four acres surrounding the Thomas Lee House Museum. The Eastline Historical Society spends about $1,300 a year to have a local Eastline lawn business mow this property and maintain the grounds. So you can see, this eats up a lot of the $2,250 that is allocated to the historical society. You can imagine the impact it will be have if the money is reduced significantly by the proposed Board of Finance budget cuts. So I'm here tonight to ask the Board of Selectmen to look into these budget cuts and to find out why they are done. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate that. Would anyone else like to address the board? And if you were just to give your name and address and.
Good evening, my name is Mary Cattillo, I live at 74 Fairhaven Road in Niantic. I'm here to voice my disappointment, my shock actually, at the surprise reduction in funds that the Board of Finance has earmarked for our nonprofit organizations. With no prior warning or discussion, none of us were able to make our case for our group's importance to the town. We add immeasurably to the quality of life here, are in in large part a reason people want to come to Eastline and residents want to stay here. I'm President of the Historic Eastline Cemeteries Association. We began in 1989 to identify, research, protect, and maintain the oldest cemeteries in town which have no perpetual care. Currently, 16 cemeteries are under our care. We mow the three largest cemeteries multiple times a year at our own expense. Large, dangerous trees and branches must be removed professionally. Utilizing funds from the town, donations, and hundreds of volunteer hours, members have been able to bring these ancient burial grounds back from obscurity. We proudly clean veterans' headstones and place over 100 flags on the graves of veterans of this country's early wars, the French and Indian Wars, the Revolutionary War, the War of 1812, Civil War, and the Spanish-American War. We honor the people who established this town and left the legacy we all enjoy today. We would like to invite the members of this board to take a tour of our town's cemeteries with us, so you could see for yourselves that your support is essential for us to continue this important service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else need to address the board? Yes.
Elizabeth Cookto, 154 Pennsylvania Avenue. I am the Secretary for the Historic Eastline Cemetery Association, and I am also your Town Historian. I just want to address that the cemeteries in our town that we care for contain the graves of the earliest founders of this town. These stones date from the mid-1700s, and it has been our mission to care for them, care for the cemeteries, and keep all their stories and memories alive. If we don't have the town's support to help care for these burial grounds, and if by chance we could not do it anymore, then it will be up to the town employees to care for them, as there are state regulations regarding the care for cemeteries. The volunteers and all of the nonprofits give of their time and sometimes give of their own money to help these groups. They do it for the love of their town. Cutting their budgets does not send a good message to our town's population. It shows the town does not care for the nonprofits, or the people, excuse me, who take their time to help them. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marjorie Mekoff, I live at 6 Cedar Ridge Road, Eastline. We moved here in 1979, and I remember very vividly walking the baby carriage down Main Street, and I saw, at that time, two very old ladies pull up in a station wagon and brought water jugs out, and they were watering the planters along Main Street because the businesses wouldn't do it, and they wanted downtown to look nice, clean, attractive. And I thought, wow, you know, this is where we're going to stay. And we've been here ever since. We've invested a lot into this town, Boy Scouts Church, PTA. Four years ago, during the pandemic, I decided that I would found Pollinator Pathway Eastline Inc. My husband and I put the seed money in, Denise Dinsmore and I have put in a lot of our own money. We are not a garden club. We are an ecological restoration organization. We are totally volunteer. Last year, I spent about 1,657 hours working for PPELE. I haven't figured out how much I've done this year, but anyway, my point is, there's a lot of folks here in town that are very passionate, I should use the word, about our environment, about our waterways. I know people that volunteer on their own time to test waterways here for salts and pollutants. These people go unnoticed, unrecognized, no newspaper reports about these people. They're all volunteers. My group, we have a small group of volunteers, there's about six or seven of us, and we have been clearing invasive plants all over town. We have been establishing native plant gardens. Don't have time to explain to you how native plants are important, but just let me say that they evolved here in the northeast region 150 million years ago that co-evolved with our insects. They do more than just pollinate. Some of us are master gardeners, all of us have ongoing, continuing education so that we have the cutting-edge technology to know what we're doing. We haven't really asked the town for much money at all, we've written several grants. That grant money has, is gone. We just did Phase Two at the Betty Murphy Memorial Garden. Today, as a matter of fact, we planted 33 native perennials that will come back for years. We need funding for Phase One, which is probably the last phase, at least for a while. We're buying small plants at wholesale. We're very, very resourceful, Denise and I are actually kind of cheap. We recycle paper for handouts, you name it, we do it. So I just want to let you know, we'd love to show you where we're working around town. It's all on town property, and we're passionate about what we do, and I really hope that we can continue the spirit of Eastline and our volunteer-ism, our volunteer, community-run town. A lot of us go unnoticed, but I'll be tooting PPEL's horn a lot more often. I've kind of been quiet those last four years, but I don't think I'm going to be quiet anymore. So thank you for listening to me, it's been a delight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? And if you could just identify yourself and your address, please.
Yes, my name is Lee Edwards, I reside at 377 Main Street, Suite 207, in the Bayside Building. I just wanted to speak up and say that I am eager to contribute my skills and passion to working on the Fair Rent Commission.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
I don't know if you heard us, but we're going to be taking everybody who wants to speak about the Fair Rent Commission later on on the agenda, and not do it in publication.
All right, I thought he had said we could speak now. All right.
Yeah, so maybe you want, I had already, I had announced earlier that if you want to just get back up when we.
I can get back up then?
Yeah.
I do have one other thing I would like to bring up, though.
Yeah, sure.
While I'm up here.
Sure.
The painting of the no parking areas alongside the crosswalks is needed in this town for a long time. However, where I live, at 377 Main Street, we really need to have on either side of the entrance and egress of that parking area for the building, to have some kind of zoned-off area not to park as well. I have here pictures of a vehicle that was parked right up against, if I may step forward. I'm afraid you'll have to share these, I didn't want to burn up all the ink in my printer.
Where is 377 Main Street, just?
Directly across from 374 Restaurant.
Oh, so on the other side of the street?
Other side of the street.
Got it, okay, thank you.
This vehicle shown in this picture was parked there the other morning before I left to go to work last week, and there wasn't a single vehicle in front of that car. They had plenty of room to be able to pull forward a little bit more to allow me to pull out in order to make a right-hand turn to go to work. It is very difficult to see approaching vehicles when they're that close to the driveway, not only for turning in, but you know, coming out as well, you know, we can't see if there's a pedestrian on the sidewalk. So by Justina's Barber, if we could back up just a little bit from that area and in front of Bayside Building to give us a little more visibility in order to easily make our exit from our parking lot. A number of people have complained about it, I know our building manager has looked into it, we don't know who owns that vehicle, but that was the second day that vehicle was parked there, just like that. And I do, just to mention quickly, I do work for the town, I am a senior center driver, I'm a senior center bus, so I need to get out there and head down to the police station to pick up the bus first thing in the morning. I don't want to have an accident in my car to destroy the possibility of helping to transport the residents of this town that day. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address the board? All right. If there's no one else, then we'll move on, and thank you for all the commentary, it is appreciated. Next on our agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 4th, 2024. Do I hear a motion?
Sure. Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 4th, 2024, submitted.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Discussion, any changes, observations?
Yeah, I had on page three, under 2C, it says Dog Park Subcommittee. I guess it's one, two, three, fourth line from the bottom of that paragraph, it says, it is no different that our other parks should be, it should be than, T-H-A-N.
Okay.
All right? Instead of that.
It's 2C?
So right here.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, that should be than, instead of that. And then, on page four, under Ex officia reports, on the second line, it was 4A, it says, light manufacturing facility with 369 parking spaces, and it says, and a retaining wall. I don't know what I said, but I didn't say that, so I would just delete, and a retaining wall. I'll second.
Yep, all right. In the, okay, very good. Any other changes to the minutes? Being none, all in favor of approving the minutes as modified, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain, any abstaining? So the motion carries. Next is the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar for September 18th, 2024, in the amount of
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, the motion carries. All right, moving on to new business, the first item is discussion of possible action, EV charging rates. Do we have a?
Since this item will be tabled, I have.
Oh, it's going to be tabled, all right. So that takes care of that one. Next, item B, is a discussion of capital improvement plan committing, and we did receive a handout tonight from Kevin, did you want to?
Yeah.
Address that?
That wire is dangerous. I see what you did there, Lee. All right, so there's actually three documents in front of you. There's like a quick little summary, one work paper that kind of just lists what we're looking to do. I presented a timeline as well that corresponds with our budget, and then there's a more in-depth capital improvement plan committee regulation, it might be called, because it's not an ordinance, that we, you know, probably should look at and make adjustments to in the future. But so just, we're going to go over that one-page little synopsis. So what we're doing is looking to establish a capital improvement program committee to oversee the capital projects of the town, as far as, you know, setting a budget for them annually, and also for the five-year capital improvement plan that we need to submit. So our plan is to establish, you know, administrative structure over the CIP process, and just kind of create some guidelines. So every year, you know, the past two years I've been here, the five-year capital plan, we get one, the first year I started, the second year, it's almost like 90% different than the year before, so it's not really a five-year capital plan if we're changing everything, you know, every year. So I think, you know, comprising a committee would hold everyone's feet to the fire and align everyone's interests, and to make sure we can afford it all, right? So the committee would be comprised of nine, nine members, two from the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen would appoint or, you know, vote a member of the public in, Board of Finance, same thing, Board of Ed, same thing. All the town department heads, the Board of Ed department heads would be resources for the committee to formulate a package to present to the Board of Selectmen during the budget negotiate, or budget discussions in the January, February timeframe. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a comment.
All right.
That it's great, because I was the one that said around budget time, it was overwhelming coming in, and you're asking questions to kind of see, well, what we can move, what's in need right now, what can wait, and I think this is going to be a great addition, so I'm excited for it. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree, thank you for presenting this, this is going to be something that really helps establish continuity, and even with the turnover that has to happen on this board, from time to time, this will allow things to be smooth and not overwhelming, as my fellow board member says.
So the plan is to kind of have this committee kicked off sometime in early November, and then, you know, have three months or so, three, four months, to get a package to the Board of, or Selectmen and the Board of Finance. So, yeah, this is just initial, initial presentation of it, hopefully in the next month or so, we can iron out who's on it for the three boards, and then start scheduling meetings and all that fun stuff.
Nice, thank you.
Great. Yeah, I just want to say, Kevin, thank you for your initiative in getting this going. It's, you know, having served on the Board of Selectmen for a number of years, we get to budget season, it always seems like that the capital improvement plan has been a sort of a moving target, and as you say, it changes a lot from year to year, and I think this will lend some, you know, keep making it not as easy to change it, to get some forward thinking by group, and it will allow us to plan the future in a much better way, in strategic ways, so thank you for.
So long-term planning.
Yeah, that's what we need, and I think some of that has been lacking, and we're trying to bring that to the table, so thank you, Kevin.
So this committee would begin work after being formulated, would begin work and deliberations you have in November?
Correct.
And then, how much time would that give them to work on plans before having to submit the actual budget?
So they'd have all December, most of January, and then if they could, you know, if they submitted a package early February, the Board of Finance really takes it over second week in March. So they have until then, but I imagine the Board of Selectmen would want some time to look the package over, and so, just a matter of fitting, fitting those meetings into the already busy budget calendar.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, so there's going to be some long nights.
It'd be nice if we could have it spread out a little bit.
Well, so we've, we kind of just ran out of time here, it's already halfway through September, so the plan would have been to present this, you know, in the August timeframe, but everything's kind of been shifted, you know, a month, so we're trying to, trying to get this now in front of the boards, and that way we can hopefully start in that November timeframe and get this ramped up, so.
And once we get it established next year, it'll be that much, next cycle?
Smoother.
It's going to be that much smoother, and we'll have a working document that everyone's already looked at prior, a year earlier, so.
So we have a lot, we have a lot of debt, so this is really important to get a hold of it, and then plan for the future, and as bonds drop off, that's really where you can add a bigger bond, to smooth out the debt payments, so there's, there's a lot to this, so it's good we're projecting long-term now. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Before, before you leave, Kevin, what backgrounds would you, would we be looking for, for people who wanted to serve on this? Are we looking at existing commission members from various boards, and then some representation from the public?
It doesn't really, so it's, you know, best qualified? I didn't really get into the weeds of who you guys would select, I, I just, you know, said those six, the six elected people and three unelected, so I can dig in more to that and see what best practice is. Everything, this is, the Government Finance Officers Association, GF.O.A., has best practices over budgeting, so this is following the Capital Improvement Programming, A Guide for Smaller Governments, which is a publication from the Government Finance Officers Association. So they might have, they might have some literature on that, so.
But six of the members are already somewhat predetermined, because they're going to be coming from existing boards.
Correct.
Yeah, so, they'll be the others that will have some discretion, more discretion.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Next on the agenda is discussion on possible action authorizing the Board of Education to apply for a grant for the Lily B. Haynes School Roof Replacement Project. Would you want to address that, or we?
Yeah, happy to. First, let me, let me just start off quick by thanking our Board of Selectmen, as well as Sandy and Mariana for helping to expedite this. There's a bit of a backlog jam at the, at the state, Department of Administrative Services. These two roof projects were approved through capital for this current year, as I'm sure you remember, and we're trying to expedite to get into the queue so we can get these done for next summer. So hence, we're before you now with the information and the process of what the Board of Selectmen needs to do. And on the Board of Ed side, we're in the process of getting the architect lined up and going out for that, that component. So hopefully had a chance to just look at the summary as a reminder of, you know, what was approved, and basically, the things that are listed here are pretty straightforward and the needs for what has to happen, so we can apply for reimbursement at the state level on these roof projects. And that's the most important reason for getting these, all this documentation submitted to Department of Administrative Services.
In the past, what has been the general formula for reimbursement from the state?
So when we did the elementary projects, we received about 43%, it's down to a little over 40% now, so we'll receive 40%, 40% on both the Aquatic Center Roof Project, as well as the Lily B. Haynes Roof Project, all in total cost.
Is this money, we have to expend the money first, and then it comes back to us?
Exactly. Got to, got to pay to get, I guess, Roseanne.
40% back is good.
Yeah, 40% off of, you know, the total amount is, is good, not something we want to overlook by any means, so we need to make sure we cross Ts and dot Is and get this submitted to the Department of Administrative Services.
When do you foresee actually doing the projects?
Next summer. So, yeah, the hope would be to go out for bid in February timeframe and go from there, so it's prepared for next summer. That's why we're really trying to expedite to get this in, you know, in early October.
And that's a 20-year-old roof, and you're going to be replacing about, what, 87,000 square feet?
Exactly, so the north wing on Lily B. Haynes does not need to be done, that's not eligible, it's got to be over 20 years in order to get the reimbursement, so that was done in 2011, so it's the rest of the entire Lily B. Haynes roof that needs to be done, was not done as part of the elementary school projects because it wasn't eligible yet.
Yep, we wouldn't get the reimbursement.
Exactly, we didn't get the reimbursement, so that's why we waited, now we get the reimbursement, yeah. Aquatic Center, 24, 25 years old, and that's definitely in need of replacement as well.
What year roof are you planning to put on, differently?
Oh, that's a good ques, I don't off the top of my head. Do you recall what year, what?
Like length of time?
30 to 30 to 50, somewhere in that range.
30 to 50, okay.
Yeah. But I can get that from Dr. Lund, our director.
No, I'm sure you'll, yeah, that's fine.
All right, any other discussion on that item? And can I hear a motion?
Resolve that the Eastline Board of Selectmen. Okay, move the following. Resolve that the Eastline Board of Selectmen authorizes the Eastline Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the Roof Replacement Project at Lily B. Haynes Elementary School.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Candace. Any additional discussion? Being none, all in favor of this project indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, motion carries. Next up.
If I could just have a couple of additional questions, is there any priority to this list in case we can't get the entire amount of funding?
They go in at the same time, Roseanne, both of them need to be done, so if you recall, we've got, the Niantic Center Roof is next in the queue, which needs to, we get done the following summer if approved. We held off on the Niantic Center because that was still in better shape, that was another one that wasn't done, it wasn't eligible yet during the school projects, you know, five, six years ago.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so next is similar, it's discussion on possible action authorizing the Board of Education to apply for a grant for the Eastline High School Roof, Aquatic Center Roof Replacement Project.
So basically the same exact, same exact setup, just different roof.
You'd also be doing it same timeframe?
Same timeframe, yes. Same timeframe, yes. Both of these would be planned for next summer.
Okay.
So, going out to bid simultaneously to have them both done this summer.
And this was, you know, the roof that's over the pool, and there was the humidity problem, it created rust underneath the roof, and so, now it has to be repaired. I think they, they understand now the problem with the humidity, and there's...
Correct, yeah. Dehumidification system was put in about eight, eight years ago, eight, nine years ago. It has done its job, it slowed down that progression of deterioration, but, you know, it's some, I'm not sure, I think some of you might have been able to walk through and see flakes are falling from the roof into the pool on people.
So, it's overdue, and, and we think after replacement with, with the new dehumidifiers in place, it'll...
Exactly. It should last, yeah, exactly. Should be another thirty to thirty-plus years.
Sounds great. All right. Do I hear a motion?
Move the following. Resolve that the Eastline Board of Selectmen authorizes the Eastline Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the roof replacement project at Eastline High School Aquatic Center.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Candace. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, the motion carries. Thank you. All right. Again, in the same, same vein here, discussion and possible action authorize the Board of Education to prepare schematic drawings for Lily B. Haynes Elementary School Roof Replacement Project.
So, this is basically just the conceptualization of what will occur with the architect. We will take those items up to the Department of Administrative Services, review them with them, and then they give the approval. So, it's basically just...
This is more than the planning section at this point.
Exactly, the planning aspect with the architect.
Okay. Pretty straightforward. Do I hear a motion?
Move the following. Resolve that the Eastline Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the roof replacement project at Lily B. Haynes Elementary School.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Being none. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, the motion carries. Next is discussion, this is item G on the agenda. Discussion and possible action, resolution to appoint the Town Building Committee for the Lily B. Haynes School Roof Replacement Project.
Dan, I think, did we miss F?
Yes.
Did we do it? We didn't?
Yeah, we're doing F.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure.
I jumped the gun.
That's okay. Just need that for the record.
There we go. Okay, so, yeah, for the record, we're on item F, and that would be discussion and possible action authorize Board of Education to prepare schematic drawings, Eastline High School Roof, Aquatic Center Roof Replacement Project.
Yeah, same, same process.
All right. Do I hear a motion?
Move the following. Resolve that the Eastline Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the roof replacement project at Eastline High School Aquatic Center.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you, Candace. Any further discussion? All right. Being none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, motion carries. Now, we can move on to G, which is the discussion and possible actions, a resolution to appoint the Town Building Committee for the Lily B. Haynes Elementary School Roof Replacement Project. So...
That's just being one of those additional requirements that we need to show to Department of Administrative Services.
So, do I hear a motion?
Move the following. Resolve that the Eastline Town Building Committee shall act as the building committee with regard to the roof replacement project at Lily B. Haynes Elementary School.
And do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Can we make this in one resolution covering all of ones, or we have to do a separate resolution for each one?
Well, we've done separate all the way along, I just want to keep it consistent.
Hang in there, where must they?
Yeah. Why, yeah, for this. And do we already have, we, we have an Eastline Town Building Committee?
There is a building committee in place.
There is, okay.
Their terms have expired.
They have?
Excuse me?
They, they serve a term, but I'm pretty sure the existing school building committee, I think, I think we have to reappoint.
Reappoint? Okay, well, we'll have to get to that.
So, we'll have to look at that.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that, and thank you. Okay, so, let's see. So, now, this is...
Do we reappoint, or does the Board of Ed reappoint?
Yeah, you, you reappoint.
We do.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. That's us, right?
Yeah, that's us.
Because as my recollection is out, I'm thinking about this, is that once those previous projects were finished, then that committee was disbanded.
I think it was.
Yeah.
So, it would have to be a new committee with new appointments, and with any luck, maybe we could get some of the former people reappointed, who'd have some background on procedures.
I think Mariana has something.
Yeah, Roseanne, what?
So, what was done last time is you have a standing town building committee. I did look, I think there's only one term that's expired on that town building committee, and then you added, last time, we added members of the, two members, I think, of the Board of Ed, and then I think Jeff was added as ex officio member. So, I think that's what was done. So, you just added to your town building committee for the school building project.
Okay.
So, we'll have to look into it and see where we stand, and then we'll take care of that at a future meeting. Yep, thank you. All right, then. To G? It's already been moved and seconded, am I right? Did we, all right, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, the motion carries. And now we'll do to H, which is the counterpart.
Okay.
This is discussion and possible action, resolution to appoint the Town Building Committee, Eastline High School Roof, Aquatic Center Roof Replacement Project.
Move the following. Resolve that the Eastline Town Building Committee shall act as the building committee with regard to the roof replacement project at Eastline High School Aquatic Center.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Same concept before. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, the motion carries. Next, item I, we need to schedule a public hearing and ordinance establishing a school building committee. Yes.
All right. Move the following. Town of Eastline Board of Selectmen Notice of Public Hearing Regarding An Ordinance Entitled Quote, "Ordinance Establishing A School Building Committee," End Quote. Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the Eastline Board of Selectmen at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024, at the Eastline Town Hall, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, to consider the ordinance entitled Quote, "Ordinance Establishing A School Building Committee," End Quote. Copies of the full text of the proposed ordinance are in file for public inspection at the Office of the Eastline Town Clerk, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, and at www.eeltownhall.com, to which reference may be had. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard. Dated at Eastline, Connecticut, on this 18th day of September, 2024, the Eastline Board of Selectmen.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Being none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, or any abstentions? Being none, the motion carries, scheduled public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate your help in expediting that.
Okay, now we're on to number three, old business, and this is number A, letter A, appointments to the Fair Rent Commission. And as I said earlier, at the beginning of the meeting, if there were those that wanted to address the Board of Selectmen about the Fair Rent Commission appointments, now would be a good time. And I believe, Lee, you wanted to speak to that.
I did, yes. I just wanted to, you know, again, Lee Edwards, 377 Main Street, Suite 207, in the Bayside Building. We're giving this a second shot, when it was intended to be. I just wanted to state that I'm eager to contribute my skills and passion to the committee's work, and believe that my background as a tenant aligns well with the committee's objectives. I have been a tenant in multiple towns, dealing with multiple landlords. I'm familiar with the good and the bad. I've been a resident here in Niantic for over twelve years. I've only been in the Bayside Building for four, going on five and beginning of November. I desire to keep Eastline a thriving community. I think we need to address this very strongly with the actions that they're trying to do over at Windward Village. As a driver for the Eastline Senior Center, I have opportunities to get to know some of the seniors in the town and members of our community, and hear some of their perspectives or the benefits that the town provides to them, so that they have voiced themselves how eager they are to hopefully see me on the committee. I'm confident in my ability to actively contribute to the committee's goals and collaborate effectively with other committees immediately. I assure you that if appointed, I will dedicate my time and effort to fulfilling the responsibilities of the position to the best of my abilities. I currently do work two per GM jobs. One of them, as I said, is the senior center bus driver. I am trying to bring that down to just one day a week. The new hire that just came on board have one of my days, so he can have some hours. I also work down the road at Crescent Point. I'm a driver for them, two days a week. So, I want to lump them together, this Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then have a four-day weekend. Actually be four and a half, because Wednesday's at Crescent Point, it's only a half day. But I want to thank you and for considering me for this appointment. I eagerly anticipate the opportunity to contribute to the committee's endeavors and look forward to the possibility of working alongside fellow dedicated individuals. And I thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your interest. Thank you. Is there anyone else at this time? Yes, if you please, just give your name for the record.
Yeah, my name is Alicia Chandler, and I live at the infamous Windward Village Apartments on 468 Main Street. I submit myself to be a part of the Fair Rent Commission. Going through this experience since June with our substantial rent increases, I saw the unfortunate mass exodus from our building, with tenants having to move out because of such high increases, and I would like to further help my community, not only just with my tenants, my building, but all around Eastline and Niantic, for those who are going through this issue. Me being a young professional, it's hard to, you know, try to have a, live in a decent area and then come, or, excuse me, have an unfortunate situation where, how am I going to be able to afford my rent? So, with myself being on this commission, I feel like I'd be representing, excuse me, younger adults, along with others who, who need to have a voice to be able to stay where we are. So, I like to consider myself. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Alicia.
Anyone else would like to?
My name is Gwen Dowd. I live at 468 Main Street, at Windward Village, and I'm speaking tonight to thank the board for considering me to be on the Fair Rent Committee. I think my background will enable me to serve the, the community and the residents in any apartment building in town with a common sense approach, focus on fairness, and good relationship with landlords and tenants, and also promoting a reasonable rent increase if necessary, probably will be necessary all over, but just to keep tenants respecting the rights of, excuse me, keeping the landlords respecting the rights of tenants, so that we feel valued and we feel respected, and we're not taking advantage, as many corporations are doing all over the country, because this is, this is an ongoing situation affecting every place in the nation, and we, I, I would like to see it stop in Eastlime area. So, I would be happy to serve the community and, and tenants in that regard. So, I thank you for listening.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Michael Beckich. I live at 84 Hope Street, looking to be considered for one of the alternate positions on the Fair Rent Board. For the purpose of this meeting, I, and to make up the committee, I am a registered Democrat, because you need to know that. My experience, for a little bit more than fifty years, unfortunately, it's getting that long, I have served communities as the tax assessor. I've also now, in my retirement, working as an assessor consultant, worked several years as a commercial appraiser and residential appraiser. And now, I serve on the, the Town's Commission on Aging since 2017, and currently as the chairperson. Now, the reason I'm coming forward here is in the area of rental housing rates and expenses I have, and I'm currently working with communities on setting the values on apartments and commercial properties for ad valorem or tax purposes. So, I have access to a multitude of sources of rental information that could be helpful to this commission. Some of those sources are protected under FROI, but knowing that information can let me know if the town is acting in a manner within a range for the typical, typical rents. Can't obviously divulge those, but I can, at least I know we're, how we're operating. One comment I'd like to make is, no, Lee, you're not retiring and going to one day, not if we could help it. But on the second thing, too, I know there's, there was a concern about being on multiple commissions and serving, and if there, if that, if there is a concern for that, I certainly understand that. I'm looking to be an alternate, more of a resource to the board than a direct, everyday voting member, but to be there if needed. But I would more than happy to step aside if the town wanted to consider Lee. If, if there was an issue, I would love to step aside and suggest that Lee be there and not myself. So, thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to make that presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Samuel Sims. I live at 10 Green Valley Lakes Road. I'm, I'm sure this is just more of the same, but I'm coming to talk about my application to be on the Fair Rent Commission. I'm a registered Democrat in town. I currently serve on the Planning Commission as an alternate member. I'm also a student in my senior year at Central Connecticut University, and as such, I think I provide a bit of a unique perspective on rental, on rental issues and stuff for tenants. I know, it is heartening to see that I'm not the only young professional interested in this, serving on this board, but it is still a very underrepresented community in town government in general, especially on matters of renting. And I think it is a, it is, I've been asked many times, like, while I've been involved in municipal politics and government and stuff, how we can kind of make the town more appealing to younger people, and the answer is keep rent low. The, the main thing, reason people are not interested in moving to Eastlime, at least people like myself, my peers, are younger people who are getting involved, getting into their careers and stuff, is because it is quite expensive to rent in this town, and it is not getting cheaper. I mean, the Windward Apartments are one in a series of surprisingly high rentals. So, I think my presence on this board, either as a full member or as an alternate, would provide a lot of, a bit of an invaluable, an invaluable, yes, point of view for the board, and would be very, very welcome for every, for every young person looking to relocate to Eastlime, looking to build a family, looking to build up a practice where they live. And so, I think, I thank you for your, for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'd last. John Vilcek, I live in 4 Meadow Street here in Niantic. I'm a registered Democrat. I'm a homeowner, have been here for forty-seven years. I did rent for ten years prior to that, so I... I did rent for 10 years prior to that, so I have a little of each side understanding. I think it's a civic duty to participate in government, and I think this is a noble cause. I know the town population doesn't require this, this board, however, I think it's important based on what everyone said today and also the increases at Windward. Just to give you some background, I bring 30 years of experience in the Navy, the last four of which were as a commanding officer or an officer in charge, or I had housing, enlisted housing, officer housing. It was a rental agreement under the government contract, but I was responsible for the maintenance, upkeep, planning, long-term improvements. Subsequent to my Navy career, I was in, hired by Southern Wingo Telephone, which became some other company, ending up as AT&amp;T, where I was a disaster recovery and a preparedness officer, where we made programs available to continue businesses, business units functioning in case of outages. So I think using some of this information, I have some wisdom, I have some background and knowledge on how to handle situations, difficulties, and do have the background to perhaps be reasonably judgmental toward owners and renters in this particular board. And I should probably admit that I'm also an alternate on the inland waterway agency. So if that means anything, good or bad, I admit that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the Board of Selectmen regarding the Fair Rent Commission appointments at this time? Appears that there are none. So we can move on and begin our deliberations on who we should appoint to the Fair Rent Commission. Earlier today, I prepared and I distributed to the board a proposed slate for the Fair Rent Commission and a proposed slate for the Fair Rent Commission alternates, and then a list of other interested applicants, some of whom are here tonight and have addressed the board. The reason I took it upon myself to prepare a proposed slate was there was some complexity to it in meeting the requirements of the ordinance. We had to have a landlord, a tenant, and then homeowners. And we had to balance the Democrats and the Republicans according to minority representation requirements. So given all of that, and we had a list of 13 or so, 12 or 13 applicants, I thought it would be easier if I worked out those details and provided a proposed slate that kind of meets the criteria of the ordinance. By no means is that list cast to concrete, and certainly open, and I certainly welcome discussion by the board. So it's a starting point, and we can, I don't know if you want to approach this, we can start by considering one by one those on the proposed slate and then decide whether or not we're in favor of including that individual.
If there's no objection and the board is in support of all of the applicants that we have before us, could that be one motion?
I think we have to move on each, I don't think we can move for the entire slate. I think we have to do it individually.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Okay. So the proposed state Fair Rent Commission at the top, you've got a few homeowners, which is three, and then you have a landlord and you have a tenant. So I don't routinely look at commission members and say, are you an I, are you an R, or are you a D, and then put preference? That's not something that I do. However, you do have to meet a criteria. And straight out, when I looked at that, I said to myself, well, there's three Ds and two Rs. And could it be reasonable to move Mr. Carpenteri in because he's an independent, which then you would have two Ds, two Rs, then you'd have the independent, is a thought? And I don't know if that is something that can be considered. Mr. Carpenteri is a landlord, he's also a homeowner.
So you would have to switch out him with another Republican landlord? You've got to, do you know what I mean? Like, you have to follow.
You have to follow.
Otherwise, yeah, so the other Republican landlord.
Well, he's not a Republican, he's an independent.
So the state statute says that you cannot exceed two-thirds of any one party, right?
Right.
Is that what it is?
Correct.
Yeah, so as long as there's not, I mean, there's one, two, three, four Democrats, one, two, three Republicans in this proposed slate, if there's eight members, you can have up to five of any one party and still meet the criteria of the law.
No, because we had it, no, I don't think that's right. You have to do it separate. We're talking five, so you need, you need that minority representation, I think, for the.
At least two Republicans.
For the, for the committee members and for the alternates. And that's how it was written in the ordinance. Exactly.
So can we just talk about how the alternates work then? So do the alternates come in and take a spot? Like, how does that?
So if somebody isn't available that day, then they would step in?
They step in.
And, yeah, just like any other committee.
Just like any other board.
Yeah, exactly.
And whatever the protocol is, when it's off about a call, then they alternate, you go down the list, right?
Yeah.
Still, going back to what I said and what Candace said, is that if you were to swap out Steve, who is registered as an independent, for say Andrew, who is registered as a Republican, both of them being landlords, you still would preserve minority representation, because there would still only be three people from the Democratic Party and two not from the Democratic Party.
Or could he swap with a homeowner that's a D and come in?
I think the issue is.
No, because you need landlords. See, that's, yeah, no, this was, yeah, very confusing trying to get this.
Yeah, and it's, it is difficult to try to.
That's why we kind of put a slate together, not just based on.
Trying to, I set up a matrix.
The Ds, the Rs, yeah, no, this was, it took time trying to figure it out.
He was a homeowner, too.
Well, that's why, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I know, but we needed, yeah, but we need the landlord, we're going by the landlord.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, people may be homeowners, but we need the residential landlord, that was the key.
But if Candace wishes to push the issue, that would be.
So then, yeah, so then you would change out Steve Carpenteri for, it would have to only be Andrew Scalvors because he's a Republican landlord. Are you following?
With an independent.
Or he's a landlord. Do you know what I mean? You can't like take a tenant or a homeowner, because then we're not following these ordinance.
Did we get a resume from Mr.?
From who?
Did we get a resume from Mr. Scalvors?
There's none of them.
No, I, I spoke to him. He is the owner of, what is it, five, five churches, I think it is? And he, he's a landlord. He was very interested in doing this. I just spoke to him the other day, and that's what he said. And he's, you know, he's been a landlord, that's what he told me.
Is he a landlord of residential facilities, or is it just commercial? And does that matter?
No, it does matter. It's got to be residential. Yeah, no.
And if he owns five churches, is that commercial or does he also own residences?
He, I confirmed he was a residential landlord, yeah. So regardless, he can be a commercial, like Dan Horgan.
He rents.
He's a homeowner, but he's a commercial landlord, so it doesn't really come underneath this. He's actually just a homeowner now.
All right, no worries. I'm not trying to murky the waters.
No, 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 this is very confusing.
I just wanted to ask the question because it would be nice, I mean, I, you know, I don't think anybody's going to be voting in a political fashion anyway, at least I would hope not. But to have maybe the two Ds, the two Rs, and then the I or the U, I just want to throw it out there. I know, okay, yeah.
Well, considering that we did not get a resume from Mrs. Scalvors, nor did he come this evening, then I would not be in favor of the swap on that basis.
You would or would not?
I would not.
You would want to preserve him as?
No, I would not be in favor of swapping out Mr. Carpenteri.
Well, at this point, I'm not asking for a swap. I just asked the question. I'm not asking.
So it wasn't a proposal, it was just like.
I'm just asking the question.
Just an idea.
As if we can never.
Well, I would suggest a swap, looking at the folks who have come before us this evening and considering, oh, wait, never mind.
Yeah, it gets a little confusing.
Actually, I do believe this could work.
What's that?
Ms. Dowd, who spoke this evening and did a wonderful job, thank you, brought a lot to the table, but I believe perhaps if she were replaced with Alicia Chandler from the other interested applicants list, that would be a tenant from the same facility. The list I have here says that she's at 377 Main Street, actually, she's at 468 Main Street, Windward Village. So it would be a commensurate swap. The reason I suggest it is just because I believe Alicia brings a perspective of youth and professionals, young professional to the table that I think is missing elsewhere.
But one, but one is an R, one is a D.
The problem is, she's, right, you can't switch an R for a D.
She can't swap because of the.
So the, I believe that's two-thirds is what we need to preserve?
So we need.
If Steve is independent, if he is truly an independent, or from the independent party or unaffiliated.
Yeah.
Two Democrats make up two-thirds, which would be minority representation, would preserve minority representation.
But there's no, you don't have any Republicans on the, as well?
You don't need a Republican.
No, it says you need a Republican in the ordinance.
That's why, yeah.
It says in the state statute that you need a Republican.
No, in our ordinance, it said we need a Republican. So that was.
We're trying to meet, yeah.
Yeah, this.
So the ordinance.
The way it was written was very difficult trying to.
And that's why this is.
Yeah.
So I, yeah, so I set up a matrix and I took the ordinance and I tried to define, I tried to find a combination with who we had that would satisfy the requirements of the ordinance and using the particular characteristics of the applicants that we had.
Well, then I withdraw my proposal.
No, and I'm glad that we're thinking about it and we're asking those questions.
Yeah.
You know, the last thing I want is anyone to think that I'm trying to, you know, advance it, you know, an agenda that I, you know, that I made up here, and it's not that way.
Well, we had to have a starting point.
Yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Something for us to work with.
Well, I'd like to say that I'm very happy to have so many people that are willing to serve. It's something that, you know, we were hoping to actually vote on at the last meeting. And I'm, I'm okay with the selections and what you've put out. I just wanted to ask that one question about, as far as balance, and we are trying to meet a tremendous amount of, you know, guidelines, basically.
Right.
Yeah, that's what took so long, literally trying to put everybody in there.
Check the boxes.
Oh, wait, somebody's.
I wasn't hearing some of the things you were saying, but I want to ask a question. You're talking, you say you have.
You have to use the U.
It's okay.
Sorry, we just can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
I was actually just thinking.
Won't get recorded unless you buy the.
My name is John Vasco, 468 Main Street, 311.
Okay, sorry about that.
I'm sorry. We keep talking about public.
What, did you just?
Excuse me. John Vasco, I said, at 468 Main Street.
John Vasco?
V A S K O.
Okay.
Apartment 311.
Hi, John.
Good evening. I'm trying to understand the mix of the people that are coming on this board. I hear Republicans. Now, are these Republicans, the first thing I want to know, are they, are they landlords that are Republicans? I'm trying to see where you're looking for.
One's a landlord, one's a tenant.
One's a landlord, so it's a one and one. So you're trying, you're trying to make this mix of Republicans and Democrats, which.
Because we have, we have.
Yeah, because you have it in your ordinance, I keep saying, and then, you know, when the ordinance comes through, I didn't read it, okay? So I'm trying to understand the balance here. Now, you have some non-affiliated or independents. Do you have to have two of them? Or it doesn't matter on those, those people?
No, you don't have to have two.
So politics falls into this whole realm of common sense, so to speak. You've got to have two Republicans, two Democrats, or you don't have to have two independents or non-affiliated?
You have something called minority representation.
Okay.
So you have to have two-thirds, the minority.
You can't exceed two-thirds of any one party.
No, you're trying to keep it into two of this, two of that, two of this.
It's, it's like that in every single commission.
Commission.
That's just the way it is.
You want that balance, you want the balance.
You have to, that's required.
It's just, it's required, yeah.
So I'm looking at, or hearing you say non-affiliate, non-affiliate, so if a Democrat can make it as a backup, so that would mean that a Democrat or Republican, then a non-affiliate could actually stand in for him because they don't have any affiliation with either one, but they could be considered as a Republican, considered as a vote on that side. You know what you're saying?
So.
If I should, to understand that, you're looking.
I think I'm, let me see if I can answer your question. So if, let's say there's a meeting and somebody doesn't show up, then we just, we just go to the list of alternates and.
I think you do it by alphabetical order.
Alphabetical order.
And so whoever, you know, if the last name begins with A, that alternate then takes that place.
But he doesn't have to be a Democrat or Republican.
It can be anybody, it's just by.
Okay, so we.
Once you're an alternate, then you just go by alphabetical order and you keep going.
It doesn't matter what, what his affiliation is.
And that's how we do that, yeah.
Okay, so that's good, so anybody can.
Because otherwise, we'd never have a full board.
I know.
You know, that's really, yeah, you know, the meetings couldn't go forward, so.
All right, so I, we can hear back, I'm sorry, I'm not.
Okay, we'll speak louder.
A little louder so we can, we can all go home tonight and digest what we're here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And by the way, this, this requirement of party balance and so on is not our making up.
Yeah.
It is state law.
Yeah.
So.
All right.
Okay, so.
Do you want me to start making motions?
Yeah, and, and I could just speak a little bit about Brian Wright, the first one. That's someone that I know, and I, we were short, a couple of people, and I reached out and he, he's a, he's a new homeowner, he was a tenant, now he's a homeowner, and I think he's very interested in participating, and this would be his first commission that he would serve on in a town. He seems to be a very fair-minded individual, so I think he'd be a good candidate for it. All right, so we want to just start.
All right, move to appoint Brian Wright of 127 Black Point Road, Niantic, as a member on the Fair Rent Commission for the town of East Lime with a term to expire on January 3rd, 2028.
Do I hear a second?
I will second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of appointing Brian Wright indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, being none, motion carries. Congratulations. All right, next, on our next motion.
All right, it's move to appoint Daniel Horgan of 15 Village Drive, East Lime, as a member on the Fair Rent Commission for the town of East Lime with a term to expire on January 3rd, 2028.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like, I know Dana Horgan, and he is an attorney, he's been an attorney for several years. He's also a commercial landlord, and he was also president of the Bar Association for New London County. So I think he would be very good, I think he would be fair, and I think he would know how also to negotiate between the landlords and the tenants and be fair and impartial.
And I know Daniel Horgan as well, and I would agree with your comments, a very fair-minded individual and knowledgeable, and I think he'd be great on the commission.
I would support that as well. Previously, he has been on a couple of other commissions some time ago, so I think he has the experience of the town, and he's been active in the community. What was Wright's party affiliation?
Right. Any other, any other comments? And being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Being none, motion carries. Congratulations, Daniel Horgan.
I'd like to nominate Steve Carpenteri, who's a landlord, but, and also a commercial property owner. His local business that he runs. Uh, his local business that he runs, um, there are a wide variety of people that go in there. Uh, it's a very popular business and so he sees a lot of people from within the community, hears a lot of comments and concerns about pe- from people, and, um, I think he has a broad perspective of the general population of the town.
And, oh, would you want to, um, for, as an alternate or as, as a part of the full commission? Because we had, creates a problem if he's on the.
It's not meeting the guideline, that's why.
Doesn't meet the guideline.
That's why we didn't.
Except he's a landlord.
Right, but then it's, if, if we, if we appoint him to the commission, then it takes away one of the Republicans.
That we need.
That we need to meet the.
So then we won't meet the criteria, that's why.
And the ordinance.
On the works.
Yeah. So that's, that's the problem. We had proposed him as an alternate so we could balance things out.
Well, then I think I'll have to withdraw my motion. Unless we want to ta- unless we want him to take an alternate position.
Pardon me?
Unless we want him to take an alternate position.
We do, yeah, we have, we have, we are going to appoint him as, well, we're hoping that he gets appointed as an alternate. So, we'll see, we'll see what the board does. But the next one on our list would be, uh, John Vilcek, so I don't know if I can hear a motion?
Move to appoint John Vilcek of Four Meadow Street, Nianic, as a member on the Fair Rent Commission for the Town of Eastlime with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? If not, we'll go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, I was impressed when Mr. Vilcek stood up, I, I, I even wrote down, you know, he thought it was his civic duty to participate and, and it was a noble cause.
Yeah.
And that really resonated with me. Um, and, um, you know, I called him and asked him if he would be on this and, you know, he would, he was, he was very, um, very gracious, you know, about it. So, yeah, I would definitely, um, be in support of him.
Okay. Then, those with any other commentary? Uh, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, uh, the motion carries. Congratulations, thank you, John. Next is, do I hear a motion for Andrew Sklvaris?
Move to appoint Andrew Sklvaris of thirty Beach Avenue, Nianic, as a member on the Fair Rent Commission for the Town of Eastlime with a term to expire on January fifth, twenty twenty-six.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Wait a minute, hang on one second.
What, what?
That's correct.
We, we have a different.
It's correct. You have to have three for four years and two for two years.
Oh, got it, okay, thanks.
Okay.
All right, so you second, yep, yep.
I second too.
That was me.
Okay. All right, we have a second. Any additional discussion for Mr. Sklvaris? Being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, motion carries. Congratulations, Andrew Sklvaris, and thank you. Finally, for the, uh, for the commission itself, uh, do I hear a motion for Nancy Johnson?
Move to appoint Nancy Johnson of ten King Arthur Drive, number one twenty-one, Nianic, as a member on the Fair Rent Commission for the Town of Eastlime with a term to expire on January fifth, twenty twenty-six.
Do I, uh, hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Um, her appointment would round out the necessary members that we need. She's a Republican, she's a tenant, and, uh, that would round it out so we meet the, uh, requirements of the ordinance, so. Um, with that, any further discussion? All in favor of Nancy Johnson, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, motion carries. Congratulations to Nancy. And that rounds out, uh, our slate for the Fair Rent Commission. We'll now, uh, address the alternates. And, um, here, um, do I hear a motion for Steve Carpenterry as an alternate?
Move to appoint Steve Carpenterry of twenty-five Harvest Glen, Eastlime, as an alternate member on the Fair Rent Commission for the Town of Eastlime with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Any additional, we've already talked about Steve a little bit, any further discussion? All right, if not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, motion carries. And thank you, Steve, for agreeing to serve as an alternate on the Fair Rent Commission. Next, we'll hear a motion, uh, to appoint Mike Beckett as an alternate.
Move to appoint Mike Beckett of eighty-four Hope Street, Nianic, as an alternate member on the Fair Rent Commission for the Town of Eastlime with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Can I say something? It's all men and one woman so far. Judy Pluff, four sixty-eight Main Street, Winwood Village, I'm disappointed no one from Winwood Village is on it. And it's all men and one, one woman. That's all I want to say. And is it more landlords and is it fully balanced? It seemed like, maybe we can't hear you well, but it seems like there was more landlords.
It's a good point that you're making, ma'am. Um, it has three homeowners.
Okay.
And, uh, one landlord and one tenant.
And one woman.
And that's pursuant to the ordinance?
One woman, one woman. It should be in the ordinance.
Well, we, we didn't have, I mean, it wasn't in the ordinance, we were, we, we put it out to everybody.
Well, it's saying you have women here that volunteer.
This is, this is who responded and who fit the.
Alicia doesn't fit. Ryan doesn't fit.
We.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, and this is out of order, I'm a s- I'm sorry, Judy, but, um, we're in the middle of making motions.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We worked so hard to get this, I'm sorry, I was helping.
Please, make comment at the end, uh, we have a public comment section.
Yeah, don't comment at the end.
Oh.
Okay. All right, so we were, uh, we had seconded the motion, is that right?
I believe so.
Well, just to be sure, we have.
I, I second.
We seconded Mike Beckett, okay.
All right, any further discussion with Mike? Um, then all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Being, uh, none, any abstentions? Motion carries, Mike is appointed as an alternate. Next, uh, do we have a motion for Gwen Dowd?
Move to appoint Gwen Dowd of four sixty-eight Main Street, Nianic, as an alternate member on the Fair Rent Commission for the Town of Eastlime with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. Any, uh, further discussion regarding Gwen Dowd? Being none, all in favor, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, uh, motion carries. So, that rounds out our Fair Rent Commission. Uh, we have five members for the main commission and we have three alternates. So, um, we'll have someone to come down to the town clerk's office and be sworn and, and, uh, be sworn in.
Uh, I think we'd like to extend a thank you to all the people who did apply and who have shown great interest in, um, this issue. And, uh, we wish that we could have had a larger commission, but as we've said, we're regulate, we're, we have to face requirements.
Dan, may I just ask a question publicly because we do have other interested applicants?
Hmm.
Um, but it just didn't fit, I guess, the makeup, is that fair to say, as far as the, the requirements? So, let's say someone decides that they no longer want to serve on the commission, how does that work? Is it something that we would go to the pool, basically, that's already here, so?
Exactly.
Um, you know, those other interested applicants, you are on file, that way, if something does happen, then you would be, I would essentially assume, but I'm, that's why I'm asking it publicly, that they would be looked at as the next, um, uh, pool to be looked at of people.
Yep, that's right, and I would encourage anyone that's interested, you know, we, uh, we had put information out on the website, uh, we had some signs on the board, asking for people to contact, uh, any one of us to let us know that you had an interest. And that's where the pool came from. Um, had someone said, look, I mean, you know, everyone that had expressed an interest in being on the board, they were on the list that we considered, uh, tonight. There wasn't one person that we didn't consider. So, you know, I'm, I'm a little disappointed that people felt that, uh, uh, you know, we were trying to exclude someone, that's not the case at all. It was incumbent on anybody that had an interest to let us know, and had to let us know, the name would have been on the list and it might have played out differently. And we, we had to meet the, the requirements of, uh, the, uh, of the ordinance. But there was no attempt to, you know, there was no consideration of gender, uh, as limiting or, you know, a plus or a minus. Just the way it worked out, yeah, I mean, I would have loved to see more people apply. Yeah, so, and in fact, we, you know, we were reaching out to try to get people to, to apply. So, uh, keep that in mind, and those that are interested, please, send us your name so we can, you know, get you on the list. So if there is a vacancy, um, you can be considered. All right.
Can you wait?
You have to wait, yeah, John Vasco, of course, I'm sorry.
Do apologize, I'm not.
You have to wait for public?
You have to wait till public comment.
Oh.
At the end, yeah.
It's coming up shortly.
Yeah.
At the end of the meeting, yeah. Okay, so we've, uh, appointed a fair rent commission. Do we have ex officio reports?
I will start off. Uh, I attended the Board of Education meeting where there was, the majority of the meeting was taken up by a presentation regarding artificial intelligence. And, uh, this, the speaker was a gentleman who goes around the state, representing the state, but informing, uh, local boards and commissions of, um, what's coming down the pike in terms of artificial intelligence. And probably the biggest impact first is going to be with the education system. Uh, I also inquired about, um, the prospect for this, uh, what, what was the pic- the big picture for governmental requirements? And, um, he said, that's coming. So, it's artificial intelligence and, I don't know. I don't think I'm going to be very good at this, I have trouble sending a fax, I don't know how I'm going to deal with artificial intelligence. Um, that took a good portion of the meeting and, uh, I think, uh, that will be sufficient for the Board of Ed. Commission on Aging met, uh, Marge Cast, who is, who is a long-serving member of the commission, uh, has resigned. So that creates a vacancy on the Commission on Aging and, um, that, um, that might be of interest to someone who's in the audience here. They meet once a month on Mondays at the, uh, library, the community center, at five o'clock in the afternoon. Uh, so if anyone was interested in that, um, they could contact somebody here at, at Town Hall. Uh, also, um, the, um, Commission on Aging would like to invite the Board of Selectmen uh, to, um, take a ride in their new bus, which, uh, actually arrived two years late. And if I might digress for a minute, I think that when we think of recent major expenditures that we've had to make in terms of capital improvements, fire engines, uh, buses, things of this nature, we can't be, we can't be expecting to get the, to approve these in budget and then get them delivered the next year because they just aren't available. So I think that the newly-appointed Capital Improvements Committee has got to really take a good look at the time delays that are facing, being faced for, um, major e- equipment needs in the town. So, um, the proposal is that, um, we could either, next Wednesday's meeting or the following Wednesday's meeting, uh, meet here at six o'clock and, um, that would be just prior to our meeting, that would be an hour before. Um, the, um, Commission on Aging new bus will be here and will pick us up and take us on what would be a typical bus route within the town. Uh, we could see how, just how long it takes to actually get a passenger on board. I think I'm going to volunteer to go up in the lift, but I think that this would be very informative for us as we think about, um, our population in town that really needs this kind of assistance. So, um, at the end of the meeting, perhaps we could decide whether or not, or whether or not there was enough interest in this. And, um, then, um, we could arrange it, we could decide on a date for those people who would like to attend. Looking at, uh, last year's, uh, figures, uh, for, um, I don't know if it's for the beginning of this year too, but the commission, the, um, Commission on Aging serviced twenty-four thousand people last year. And you look at the size of their budget and it's, again, one of those pictures that's starting to be kind of grim. Ninety-two people a day on average at the, uh, community center. So again, looking at, at budget concerns, I think that that is something that, that's a commission that I think we need to pay a little more attention to. Uh, their new freezer has been delivered, again, a long wait for that. So, um, and again, the, uh, opening on, the vacancy on the Commission on Aging, uh, hopefully we will, uh, get some, um, people who would like to, um, be considered to fill the vacant, that vacancy. And I think, uh, zoning commission's tomorrow night, uh, their agenda is fairly light and so I will report on that at the next meeting. And I'm done.
Thank you, Roseanne.
Toast, cheers to you.
Jason?
Um, Harbor Asset Management Shelfish Commission met last night, they're working on a budget to send to Mr. Gervais. Um, and there's assorted facts and figures dealing with moorings and state monitoring of different shelfish beds. Um, nothing too urgent or pressing at the moment, but, uh, just know that they will be sending stuff over to you, to your office, Mr. Gervais, shortly. Um, the Stars Distem Planetarium at the high school has a couple of events coming up, uh, one more musical performance this season, seven o'clock this Friday at the Planetarium, nine twenty, band called Nova One. And also, uh, if people are interested in getting involved, there is a meeting of the board, uh, nine twenty-nine, nope, nope, nine twenty-four at six o'clock at the high school Planetarium. I believe the public is welcome to attend. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Yeah?
Um, I attended, uh, Inland Wetlands in the library, but I don't really have too much to report for either.
Candice?
Okay, I have Park and Rec and they'll be coming forward to throw out a couple of dates for the Board of Selectmen to possibly tour their fields and their building to get a good compass on, you know, how they run and what they do. They are looking for a community, uh, a commission member, so there's a seat open, so if anybody is interested in serving on the Park and Rec Commission, please reach out. Um, the dog park, uh, was a question because, uh, at the last meeting, although we had input and we spoke on it in discussion, there was no formal vote. Um, and whether or not that was needed and or not, but the assumption, uh, or the conclusion was that they did not have the support of the Board of Selectmen, uh, to move forward. Um, and I just didn't get that feel. Um, I know for myself, I had went down, uh, each one of the items that they were, uh, looking for as far as support, um, but I believe they should come back so that we can have a formal vote on, um, you know, moving them forward with our support so they can, can do what they had requested, with the exception now, so they were not asking, and correct me if I'm wrong, they were not asking for support for, uh, the specific location because that is something that is still in the works, correct? Or not?
Well, we told them to look at, you know, the other, there were, there was some public comment.
There was.
And some people seemed to object to, to one of the, uh, you know, the, the top areas that they were considering.
Right.
So we asked them to relook at it and in light of that and see, um, you know, if there were some other areas that might be, uh, another place that we could, to put a dog park. I think that's what we asked them to do.
Okay, so there, so there is no formal vote on it, then?
There was no formal vote, no, I think we just told them, keep doing what you're doing, and I think we. And I think we gave them some suggestions on how they might approach it. And asked for them to come back with more feedback and...
Right, but my understanding was they were not looking for support in our go-ahead for that location. They, and I wish I had the thing in front of me. Maybe I should pull it up for if anybody happens to know. There was a section in their presentation that specifically asked and it had absolutely nothing to do with the location. It had everything to do with basically fundraising, the support from us, possibly down the line for funding. But that was it. So they weren't, to my knowledge, they were not asking us to approve that night for them to do a site on Roxbury. This is something that they're looking at. There was opposition as to far as where, but they were going to be going to zoning and talking about different locations. But they were not asking specifically, at least to my knowledge, for the go-ahead for Roxbury because we really can't give that, I don't think, at that moment, to be honest with you anyway. But that wasn't even written in that presentation. So I think that they left kind of wondering, "Well, what are we doing?" And I had asked if we could put it on the agenda as far as a follow-up or can we not leave them hanging and give them direction? Or maybe they didn't understand because I thought that they had the go.
I did too. I thought that they had the go-ahead to keep working on it and come back with, after they solidified, you know, some of their ideas to come back so we could, you know, get it to a point where there is something that we need to act by way of a motion. I didn't feel that there was anything that was necessary to have a motion in that period of time. We weren't talking about fundraising or, you know, setting up an account. We weren't talking about a particular parcel. I think we were asking them to continue to deliberate and keep honing in on their focus of what they want to ask us to do. That was my feeling. I don't know how you...
I thought that it was to present information to us as to what they had hoped might happen. But I, I think that we did discuss possible locations because I think that would make a difference in the vote. So...
Okay, so how can, are you going to reach out to them so that they know exactly what they need to do? Or what they're, what we're in support of or not, or...
Well, I'm certainly happy to put them back on the agenda and they can come back in. We'll try to, to the best of our ability, clarify, you know, what our various roles are, what they should be doing, what we should be doing. Maybe we need to clarify that to help them.
That was the impression that I got at the Park and Rec.
Sure.
When I was there, for sure.
Then, then let's plan that.
That's why I asked actually for it to be on this agenda for tonight.
So let's, we'll plan to get them back on the agenda. They can come back in and try to figure out, you know, what direction they should take, what direction we should take and figure out what our roles are.
A little more clarity, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that sound fair?
Yeah.
I do think too that I remember Dan had recommended something on Romania Drive and I think they were supposed to be going to look at that and considering that. So, maybe you can send that to them. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else at the Parks and Rec, Candace, that we should know?
Nope, just other than they need a commission member and there's a seat open.
Okay, great, thank you. Don?
I have none. I have World's Co tomorrow night. I'll report on that at our next meeting. And regarding the dog park, one of the committee members did call me the next day and said they were upset that we didn't give them permission to go and start collecting money. We got permission for them to collect money and our finance director is handling that now. So they've been instructed to go ahead and collect.
This is the dog park?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
So we're okay with that? All right, well, I guess, you know, they need...
I think Kevin's going to actually speak.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Dan, if anyone wants to donate money to the town and have a specific reason, you know, like a set aside or a signed cause for it, like a dog park or the police canine or any of those, you know, just either, when you mail in the check, either in the memo, put the purpose of it, or just write a little letter so that way we know it's not, you know, it's set aside for a purpose, right? To kind of restrict it. So if you're going to give money to the town for a dog park, you know, the memo, "Dog park." Right? Dog park donation, something like that.
I don't think we should be accepting money for something that we haven't approved.
It's set aside in an account, so if...
It's sequestered, right? It's sequestered in the account, so if we have to...
And it has to come before you guys suspend it. So that's the whole caveat to it.
I think that was a problem before. At one point, there was money and it was sort of questionable how it was treated. But we're going to try to do it the right way. You've set up an account. You're sequestering that money.
Correct, yep.
And that way, if we don't do anything with the dog park, then we can try to keep track of who should be refunded and do it that way. Okay, thank you, Kevin. Thanks for clearing that up. So if there aren't any other, and I don't have an ex officio report tonight, but I do have a first selectman's report. Last Sunday, I attended the 30th anniversary of the Eastline Public Trust. And, you know, what I got from it was, it was nice to be there. A lot of civic-minded individuals that have put a lot of effort into this town over a long period of time. And they were talking about the formation of the Niantic Boardwalk. That, you know, has become really a focal point. For some people, it's a reason to come visit Niantic and people love it and it gets a lot of use. But it all started, you know, started off with the ideas of a couple of people. And, you know, they had this huge, tremendous vision for this boardwalk along the bay. And it seemed like an impossibility back then, so long ago. But they stuck with it. They started raising money and they formed the, you know, commission and they created a trust. And they did it. It took a lot of help from the government, help from private individuals in town, the town itself, the Board of Selectmen, but some of the other organizations, different civic-minded, Rotary, Lions, and some of these other groups. But they all came together and today we have this wonderful feature in our town. So, and then the band shell, you know, it was the same thing. They got involved with the band shell that, you know, Friday nights, people get to hear the different bands playing at the band shell at McCook's. We got to enjoy doing that one a couple of times. And so, you know, it just goes to show you though, you have, it all, everything starts with an idea. It starts with the germ, an idea, and it takes people that are motivated and that love the town and want to get involved. So I guess what I'm saying is, get involved, help us out. And that's really what it takes to make something happen and to put in the energy. And it's harder and harder to get people that really want to participate in that way. So I encourage everyone to try to get that spirit and, who knows, 20 years from now, we'll start something tonight that people marvel at. McCook's Point Park, there's one vote, by one vote that passed. And look what we have today. Someone who voted the other way, it would be, there'd be houses there and be developed. So, goes to show you. We had Freedom of Information FOIA training last week. We're trying to make sure we do the best job we can in meeting Freedom of Information requests. And we're trying to get it right. You know, it's a lot sometimes. You get multiple requests all at once. So town government, commissions, we're really trying to learn the rules and adhere to them as best we can. Sometimes there's a lot to it, but we're really trying hard to get it right. One thing I want to point out is the Route 161 I-95 project. You know, I've seen some strong criticism on Facebook and in other areas, people upset with all that's going on down there. Yeah, it's huge. It's huge what they're doing. We're, you know, we're maybe a third of the way into it, if that. Maybe a quarter of the way into it. You've seen the massive steel. They're starting to build that bridge. They're doing it at night, 8:00 at night, they shut down the road and they lift that steel overnight and they open the road back up again at 5:00 AM. And that's just one-third of the bridge. They have two more thirds to go before it can fully accommodate I-95 spanning Route 161. There also, you've seen in front of Stop and Shop, they're lifting the road. They've got to come up two and a half feet. 161 is going to be raised, two and a half feet in some spots. And so they're starting to mill down that road. They're going to put four, five inches every day of gravel and that's going to get compacted. They can only do about four inches at a time to get it up to that two and a half foot level. And then they will pave over it. And then they're doing it in 500-foot sections. So you're looking at the first 500-foot section right now that's in front of Stop and Shop. So it's going to be inconvenient. It's going to be difficult to drive through it. Don't go to the car wash first. Go to the car wash after you drive through that section of the road. That'll be covered with dust afterwards. But they're trying very hard to minimize the, you know, the impact on commuters and people using those roads. So huge project, but, you know, let's try to bear with them and they're really trying to accommodate us. Those are some of the major things today we had at the Town Hall. We had a health and safety event and it was open to the public and to employees of town. And it was, you know, it was a nice event and I appreciate all the people in town that came and visited and you get your blood pressure tested and learn about a few other things in town that are helpful. So there were several vendors and presenters here today. So we had, and I want to thank Sandy for all the hard work she did along with the others on the committee. It really went off without a hitch and everybody enjoyed themselves and it was a nice day here at the Town Hall. And I'll just say one more. I know everybody is asleep, but we did have an event the other night, last night. It wasn't a planned event. It was the sewer blew out in front of the Lime Tavern down on Route 156. They, you get everything coming in from Point of Woods and all that sewage. It's pressurized. You've got to get it up over the hill. You've got to get it down to where the Niantic River Bridge is on its way to New London. So you have these heavy-duty pumps that pressurize that flow. And it let go right in front of the Lime Tavern and the road there and it was a major disruption. And I just want to publicly thank all of our town workers, the police department, the fire department, everybody that was onsite till early in the morning, this morning. I thought it was going to be a two-day event, to be honest with you. They got it cleaned up and the roads were open by 5:00 this morning and they worked late into the night. And so we really, I hope everybody appreciates how hard and dedicated our town workers are. They really, really are, so...
It was really very well organized. I had the misfortune to go that way, to get home. But I clearly marked detour signs, arrows directing people and they had to go through, drivers had to go through, you know, part of our town where the roads are very narrow and backroads. And I think...
They did a great job.
Yep, they did.
Yeah, and they coordinated with Rocky Neck. They had to open up Rocky Neck to let Giants Neck, other people at Giants Neck Beach and Giants Neck Heights. So they had to take a detour through the park, which was available to them. But everybody coordinated, you know, we go for training for these types of events and you know what? Everything worked the way it was supposed to. So I'm very proud of our town, very proud of the people that work for it. So they did great, so. Anyhow, that's, I don't know if I want to leave on that note, on sewage, but anyhow, that's where I'll leave it. That's where I'll leave it, so, thank you.
I think we have some other public comment.
Oh, yes, now we have, there was another public comment and this is the time for it. Someone wanted to comment? Yeah, and this would be the time for that.
I'm Janet Carlson, 468 Main Street, Winwood Village. I can't express how disappointed I am that Alicia was not appointed to this board. She was probably your first applicant or among the early ones. Two of you had to go ask people to be on the board who you then appointed. You had people who were already, who had already expressed interest, but your people took precedence over Alicia. She's worked so hard for, to get this board established and we all thought she was, she was going to be on it and we, and we're all very disappointed.
Okay, I appreciate your comments.
Judy Glickstein, 468 Main Street. I too am very disappointed also that even though Gwen is an alternate, that no one from our grassroots and our energy is on the commission. Very disappointing, very disappointing.
Thanks. Sam Sims, 10 Green Valley Lakes Road. I think everyone who was sitting on the Board of Selectmen today should be very disappointed in themselves tonight. You failed to appoint a single young person to this board. There is, I mean, it's hard to imagine that anyone on this board will really sympathize with the plight of a 24, 25-year-old teacher struggling to pay their rent and it gets raised $500. You have failed, you appointed a single woman to a full-time position in this board. Call me crazy, but I don't see an 80% male board sympathizing with a single mother who's working full-time when her rent gets raised by $500, $600 or more. You failed, you failed to appoint a single person of color to this board when historically speaking, people of color have been the target of insig, like, innumerable microaggressions on behalf of landlords, be it rent hikes, be it repairs, be it maintenance. You have failed to do your due diligence looking into the tenuous sociological factors at play here and especially appointing, like, of course, if someone steps down from this board, whoever is on the list can apply again. But it is, I don't think I have to explain to you how important the first couple of months of a commission are and how important those rulings are for setting a precedent for how that commission behaves in the future. And you don't have a single young person, you don't have a single person of color. You have one woman on the board full-time. You should be incredibly disappointed in yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Judy Plo, sorry, that was a maiden name. Sometimes I'm Judy Packer, sometimes I'm Judy Plo.
You just have, for the record, so you have to...
Judy Plo, 468 Main Street, Winwood Village, and you all know that anyway. First, I just...
But she needs to hear your name.
Judy Plo, P-L-O-U-F-F-E. I do want to thank you all for, I mean, we're all happy that it passed through so quickly and that you paid so much attention to us. But now I just want to say that what everybody said here, the comments, I just have to agree on. I'm so disappointed because I really thought, because so many of us showed up and we've stuck together and we support each other and we're not, we really aren't doing it just for us. We're doing it for all the tenants in the town. But to have someone from Winwood Village on it and more evenly balanced, not... I mean, women feel like it's good to see three of you, three women, that it's balanced here. But you know, in the real world, it's not balanced. So I am disappointed. That's all I want to say.
Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. So it's time for Selectmen's response. Oh, is there anyone else?
Somebody's upstairs.
Oh, we're good. And so, I guess I'm disappointed too a little bit that there is this feeling that we're trying to exclude anyone. I thought it was understood and maybe, maybe it wasn't, that anyone that wanted to be on the board needed to tell us, needed to tell, just on a piece of paper, an email, something saying that we want to serve on the board. And then their name would have been included in the list of people that we drew from to try to, you know, we had this, this difficult, well, it wasn't that difficult, but we had, you know, had this matrix. We had to figure out with Democrats, Republicans, tenants, landlords and homeowners. And we took the pool of people that had sent us, you know, even an email, a piece of paper, a phone call to the Town Hall saying we want to be on the commission. And whether or not that was a misunderstanding with people that are here tonight, I apologize for that. That was never our intent. I certainly, you know, we were searching for people the last couple of days that would serve. You know, I was going through my phone, trying to figure out who else I could call. And we certainly would have welcomed anyone else that wanted to, you know, to fit into this matrix so that we could have... you know, to fit into this matrix so that we could have, you know, considered you as part of the board. So, I don't know, I guess there was somehow a disconnect with, with that understanding. We had to have, it had to come from people that wanted to be on the board, to approach us. And maybe, maybe that wasn't understood, but, you know, there was a, we did put it on the website, right? There was, we, we had a notice on the town website saying, please contact us. We had something out on the, on the board. Sandy and I, and Sandy really worked hard on it to get a notice out there so we can attract people that wanted to serve. So, you know, I guess it's a lesson learned by, by myself and I think probably the other members of the board. But there was certainly no intent to exclude anybody from Windward or anywhere else, or any gender or any ethnic or age group. We really, you know, we welcomed anyone that was interested. And I hope we'll keep that in mind. And those that are interested, and sometimes people can't serve on the board and have to move off of a board, please make sure that you send us something so we know. And so, I'll just, I'll close with that.
I'm sorry. Alicia applied for this commission. I know she spoke at length to Candace and Maggie at our...
She told Bruno.
What?
I, I don't...
She should have been the first person to have told it and the board looked around.
I mean, there is a process and, you know, we, there's a lot of people out there and, you know, we hope the people will come to us. And sorry, there's that feeling.
So, I guess my question can come, I'm just gonna ask it. So, out of these, okay, so out of this list that we received, okay, this was a list that Dan, you, and Ann put together and whom else? Because we didn't, we didn't see any list or names until we came in, okay? So, I guess my question, I think it's fair to ask.
Yep.
Okay, is why didn't Alicia make the tenant on the Fair Rent Commission? I guess, right? Because there's, and I, I mean, I think that it's fair. I mean, it hurts my heart to hear some of these things because that's not an intent for me at all. So, yeah, how come Alicia wasn't on that main top list that is given? I'm looking at proposed slate for Fair Rent Commission. A D, homeowner, Ryan. A D, a homeowner, Daniel. A D, homeowner, John. A Republican landlord, Andrew. A Republican tenant, Nancy Johnson. So, I guess my, my question kind of goes there. How come Alicia didn't make the list?
I would call a point of order that this discussion is out of order.
Yeah.
You, we did receive this, these materials on nine-seventeen. And I'm sorry, I don't want to seem like I'm the cruel guy here, but there's, there's an agenda. We have to stick to it. Otherwise, anyone could speak up at any meeting at any time and say anything they want. It would be very disruptive. So, forgive me if I defer to Robert's rules and agendas. I don't see this being a fruitful discussion at this time. If you wish, take it up with us after the meeting or perhaps with members of the press who are present.
And we, we have to, we have to stick to our agenda. We had public comment and now, so. And Jason's right. We have to, we do live by rules. I'll just close by saying, sorry that there's disappointment. We will always try to do better every time, so. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn to September eighteen, twenty twenty-four. Regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen at eight fifty-five PM.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Motion carries. No favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We stand adjourned.